Okay, we'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to move into silence. Pledge of Allegiance, you are the United States of America, the two republic, the British States, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Move to silence. Amen?
This meeting is being recorded for informational purposes only. All comments, we take it at the end of the meeting. If you have a question or comment, raise your hand. You will be recognized by the chairman. Come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record. Multiple speakers will not be allowed. Thank you.
Take the roll call, Chairman Trustee Michael Hobus here. Vice Chairman Trustee Bob McBride.
Here.
Trustee Michael Morelli.
Here.
Fiscal Officer Stacy Marvin.
Here.
Okay. Under Administration, the Fiscal Officer's Monthly Financial Report. We post it to the Township website. Please visit at www.bazetta twp.org, under the tab titled Administration, Financial Page and Reports. Also, please visit and follow and share our new Bazetta Township, Ohio Facebook page for updates and community events. As a reminder, the administrative offices are open Monday through Friday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. to serve our residents. Like to remind everyone that the Fire Department holds a coffee with the crew every Tuesday morning from 8:30 to 9:30 a.m. Please stop by. Safety Day is scheduled for Saturday, June 3rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the new location. This year's Safety Day will be held at the Trump County Fairgrounds. We are still accepting donations. Please contact Chief Hurlinger at 330-638-5503, or you may drop them off at the station during business hours at 2671 Clear Creek Road. We are accepting applications for shelter and pavilion rentals. You can visit our website at bazetta twp.org, under the tab Township Park, for the application rules and general information. Drive sale applications can be found on our website as well as under zoning, under miscellaneous documents. 080-23, Resolution to Accept the Meeting Minutes from May 9th, 2023, regular trustee meeting.
Make the motion.
I second the motion.
Take the vote, Trustee McBride.
Yes.
Trustee Hobus, yes. Trustee Morelli.
Yes.
081-23, Resolution Authorize the Fiscal Office to Pay Outstanding Invoices and Approve All Warrants Incurred from May 24th, 2023 through June 27th, 2023.
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
I'll take the vote, Trustee McBride.
Yes.
Trustee Hobus, yes. Trustee Morelli.
Yes.
082-23, Resolution to Enter Into a Two-Year Term Contract Beginning July 1st, 2023, With Trump Security Systems in the Amount of $87.80 per month, For All Four Locations in the Township Using Existing Equipment. I'll make a motion to table that resolution.
I'll second that motion.
I'll take the vote, Trustee McBride.
Yes.
Trustee Hobus, yes. Trustee Morelli.
Yes.
083-23, Resolution to Approve the Attached Block Party/Road Closure Request, In the Timber Creek Block Party, 2023, Scheduled for Saturday, July 1st, 2023, With a Rain Date of July 2nd, 2023, From 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Take the vote, Trustee McBride.
Yes.
Trustee Hobus, yes. Trustee Morelli.
Yes.
Okay, we move on to the Fire Department, Chief Rankin.
Thank you, I just have my agenda items, and I'd like everyone to know that this year we're going to be hosting our 75th anniversary with the Fire Department. So if there's anywhere out there that has old photos, any type of historical information, or if they just want to help plan this, have them come down to the Fire Department so we can get with them, get that information.
You gave her a made people for a copy, right?
Um, it's kind of tapered awful a little bit, but you know, it was good in the beginning. It looks like it's kind of tapered off. I'd like them to come in, they're welcome.
Might have to go.
Have any questions and look around at the equipment?
I'd go later time than half the hour.
We can try that.
Late afternoon. Thank you.
Mike, do you have anything for Chief Rankin?
No, thank you.
Stacy.
I do not.
Thank you, Chief. 084-23, Resolution to Purchase 2023 F-250 Super Duty 4x4 Truck from Mark Thomas Ford, in the amount of $54,749.88 to be paid from the American Rescue Plenipunds.
Make the motion.
I second the motion.
Take the vote, Trustee McBride.
Yes.
Trustee Hobus, yes. Trustee Morelli.
Yes.
Okay. 085-23, Resolution to Accept the Quote from Hudson Communications for the Upfit and Radio Installation of the 2023 F-250 Truck, in the amount of $11,633.69 to be paid from the Fire Fund.
I make a motion.
I'll second it.
Take the vote, Trustee McBride.
Yes.
Trustee Hobus, yes. Trustee Morelli.
Yes.
086-23, Resolution to Accept the Quote from Whitmore Services for the Truck Cap, Lights and Cargo Bedside for the 2023 F-250 Truck, in the amount of $5,464 to be paid from the Fire Fund.
Make the motion.
I second the motion.
Take the vote, Trustee McBride.
Yes.
Trustee Hobus, yes. Trustee Morelli.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, Chief. Uh, Police Department, um, Mike, do you have anything from the police?
The only thing we had was a one resolution that was in there. Raising.
Yeah.
Part-time patrol, 16.
Thirteen to sixteen.
Thirteen to sixteen. That was the one thing we had, I need to check.
Okay. Um, 087-23, Resolution to Raise the Part-Time Police Officer Wage from $13 per hour, to $16 per hour effective 5/28/2023, And They're To Be Done on an As-Needed Basis.
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
Take the vote, Trustee McBride.
Yes.
Trustee Hobus, yes. Trustee Morelli.
Yes.
Road Department.
Trustee McBride, yeah. Oh, well, we did some dug some foundations at the cemetery for new markers. Bored the foundations dug up holes. Cleaned up the cemetery. The, uh, there was a, trees are coming down. We had a couple complaints. I own a tree service, we went down there, just took some trees down, spent about four hours down there with the guys, and we trimmed a broken tree that was down there, and maybe it looks real nice down there. The guys, they have real nice, so the day was down there, entrance by the sign, it's just came out, it looks real nice. Got the mulch in the playground, I guess you had the mulch left over, Michael?
Yeah.
Is that that big pile over there?
Yeah. What will happen is, uh, in the next couple of months, it does, it does settle down for us. Yeah. Settle down, and then come fall, we'll put another layer on.
Sure.
Areas that are worn, and then come after the winter.
And we should kind of spread that.
Most of that inside there.
Sure. Uh, they put cold patch down, we set some markers out for veterans down there, and someone hated to get a sticker on there for their grave, there's some down there that they can't get behind the sign, but, uh, uh, VFW put all the markers, flags out. If they missed you, then get one from behind the sign there, or call, call us. Get a couple burials. Some guy wanted us to put a water line down there for water, and the pump was broke, we got the pump fixed. That's all. But it does, it looks, it looks real nice down there. Yeah. That, so, that's all.
Good job.
Thank you.
Do you have anything for the road?
I just want to tell, say thank you, Paul, for doing that, trying to have some of my family that's in that cemetery, and took out some of those trees there, and it looks a lot better.
Well, I mean, you know, I mean, the thing was, was if someone called to complain, and then it was just like, we don't have time for a resolution. I didn't think that long, and it's, it still took you twice as long as you thought.
Thanks for taking your time.
Yeah, I don't care, it looks nice, so, that's all.
No, you're good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we move on to Planning Directors, Zoning Inspector and Code Enforcement Officer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, it's that time of the year with property complaints, so I have a few things, a few properties on the agenda that declared nuisances. I need to add two. Parcel number 33-066300, with an address of 4362 Hoboken Black Stub Road. And then that would be the other one would be 33-021351, with an address of 2358 Wilson Sharpeville Road. That particular one, I spoke with the owner, she's elderly, she has no way to have it maintained. I explained to her the process, that if we use the abatement contractor, you know, be used except by the contractor, um, and she's willing to make reimbursement directly to the township, because it doesn't have the means to make the calls to hire someone. So place it on the, on the list for abatement, and then, once it's done, I'll send you a copy of the invoice, she'll just go reimburse the township. Um, if you'd like to have a budget of $3,000 for this year's abatement, that's okay. I do have a copy of insurance, updated insurance from the contractor. He's a sole proprietor, so he doesn't have what his company.
He's in the same one, eh?
Yeah. Yeah. Same fees, same rate. Couple ones I've sent letters to have actually already taken care of the issue, one that Bob had been aware of, and the corner of Morrow, and we're gonna second that one with their 305.
Morrow. Yeah, yeah, right in the corner. Yeah, they cut it.
Yeah. And then the one that's where Morrow makes the turn, uh, I stopped and spoke with her yesterday. Um, it seems to be some personal issue she has, uh, she didn't mow the direct front of, front of the house, but the back door inside, so I explained to her that if she can't find the contractor to do that within 10 days, she'll be on the list for the next abatement. She said, it'll go on her taxes, or she'll pay. One of the two.
Okay, so, uh, Pete, do you want a resolution for the $3,000?
No, I just, I need, I need that, uh.
Yeah, I mean, the budget's gonna be the.
Yeah.
It is.
Okay, just put it in line.
Actually, to make you aware of it, possibly you can give $3,000, and she'll be up to your property.
So monetarily, as we go throughout the year, Pete, can you just kind of give us an update?
Absolutely, yeah. We're, you know, for spend. And normally, in the past, it's always been two mow, two cut a year. You know, one to catch in the spring, spring growth, and then sometime late July, early August, hitch it again. Um, it depends on how fall weather goes, but stays warm and things keep growing, I think, till I've been one time, but I can't make a third cut.
Okay.
And again, a couple of these may not have to be abated. One is, I play a game with him every year, it seemed like, you know, until he knows that he's gonna get taxed by the contractor, doesn't it? And the 339 Johnson plant, apparently the house has been vacant. I never had a complaint on it, um, and I did, the owner just passed away, about two years ago, a younger son inherited it, due to the property, several times, over the past year, according to neighbors, um, I can't locate him, so we'll just have to go through the process with, with that. I don't think I'll be able to find who do it. Apparently, from what the neighbors do, that may be more than just a loan. Uh, my inspection, there's bags of garbage back by the garage, so, you know, for health and safety, people may have to clean that as well.
What kind of shapes the property?
It's salvageable, but it's, uh, pretty, pretty minimal.
Johnson plant.
Yeah, 339.
Yeah.
That's all I got, thank you.
Okay, well, I think it's, we need to duly note that, you know, the zoning commission and Pete have been working hand in hand. Pete, you got anything you want to say about how the zoning department's been working?
Yeah, very well, actually, you know, of course, you know, being completely bored, they hit the ground running, a little bit too zels, you know, to bite off all at one time, so, but we've made great progress with clarifying some contradictions within the resolution, um, changing some of the verbiage so that it's more appealing to businesses, and that's the most important thing, because, you know, they get properties, don't pay taxes. Especially, you know, if the dumb road becomes more of a business corridor, that's a great thing for us, so. And times have changed as far as to what is acceptable and what's not. For example, the brewery, microbrews, you know, was a brewery, flat out was not permissible, so we classified commercial, uh, brewing of beer, like, you know, your larger distributors or brewing companies, and then your microbrews and, and, uh, craft beers. So those have become more of a fad, similar to wineries, you know, they've become very, very popular, and we show them that we're willing to have them here, you know, maybe we'll get a few in the area, uh, things like that. And the same thing with indoor shipping containers, you know, we, they were unpermissible at all, completely, and it's come almost like a boutique, you know, in some communities where these indoor self-contained shipping containers are transformed into, you know, holistically protected, ear protected, you know, an air handling system, you know, and uh, creates a retail side of it, as well as, that's somewhat of a hobby, it's a good hobby, have actually become a profession if you own the, so you have someplace to go that's safe, and, uh, instructions, and buy stuff. So that's one of the things that we're welcoming into the township, in our commercial business.
Very good.
Other than that, I think the zoning commissioner and her entire board have done a great job. The zoning secretary has, you know, she's, he's been learning on the run, so it was a, you know, trial by error, or trial by fire, in a very, but, uh, it's coming along very well, thank you.
Zoning is expensive. It's expensive, you have to care, and you're doing it right, and definitely, you don't worry about that.
Yeah, unfortunately zoning is not a self-sufficient fund.
Right.
It, it's the price of doing business and having property values protected.
I do. Pete, like on this lady, you just spoke about the one that said she couldn't afford it, the grass and all that stuff.
Which one? The one of, or one of the first?
You just spoke about, the one that's in charge of it.
Oh, okay.
Now, how does that work? Do you tell her, like, quit, do it, and then, you know, just put it on her taxes?
Well, if she doesn't respond to the letter, we take action and do it.
Yeah.
Now, she says she will be able to take action, so, but I'll give, she wanted the opportunity of making direct reimbursement, instead of it going to the tax duplicator. So she says she's willing to do that, she wanted to pay in advance for a couple loans, so, we can't do that, we're not, you know, we're not a retail service, yeah, we're not on a wage scheme.
Tell her to talk to you that.
Because we're not going to be trimmed, you know, it's not going to be edged and trimmed and mowed, so, brush on it. We're just gonna go there and clean things up, and pick up any debris that might be around. So, explained to her, she, it's, nothing goes in the permanent record if she makes restitution to the township right away.
I mean, I just wanted her to know, like, she's not gonna lose her home just because she's not.
No, she, she understands, I made that perfectly clear to her, yeah.
Okay. Because if some people are really strapped, and.
Yeah.
You know, I get it. Kind of, gotta wait for her money until they sell the house one year.
She indicates that she has the means to do, to pay for it, she doesn't have the means to make the arrangements to have it paid for, she's, she can't, she's not mobile or self, ambulatory.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure that was just, I don't want to worry about stuff like that. Thank you.
Point given, Pete. No, I do not. Stacy.
I do not.
Thank you, Pete.
Thanks, Pete.
Thank you.
088-23, Resolution to Declare the Following Attached Parcials a Nuisance for Abatement, and Those With the Five As Listed.
Make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Take the vote, Trustee McBride.
Yes.
Trustee Hobus, yes. Trustee Morelli.
Yes.
All right, under Zoning Board of Commissioners and Zoning Board Appeals, Pete, do you have anything to add?
I do not. We've burned it enough, it's been last few months.
Parks and Recreation Board, Trustee Morelli.
I'm gonna defer this to our guest here. And he's the president of the board. President of the board.
Good afternoon. My name's Alex Richardson. Uh, I wanted to come talk to you today about some of the efforts as the park boards moving forward, and looking to our future of Imagination Station, and how we're trying to get fundraising established, and actually have a fund that we can move the, the money to. So I want to just talk a little bit about our efforts in that. Uh, we're looking at partnering with Cortland Park Boards. There's a Cortland Community Fund that's established currently. Uh, it's, it's actually partnered with the Eastern Ohio, Western Pennsylvania Foundation, which was established back in 1981. It's a 501(c), and I'll talk a little bit about the benefits that'll provide us here in Bazetta. Uh, but they will essentially assist in the holding of the funds that we capture through several different fundraising opportunities here in the near future. The reason we're doing this, as many of you know, Imagination Station has been around for almost 25 plus years, and we are nearing the end of life for that, uh, for that playground, and so we're starting to look at how we can begin to raise money, uh, in an effort to obtain grants, uh, whether that's through state funding or federal funding in the future. Um, and as such, we've been looking at a place to where we can collect our money with help having a large amount of fees, through processing fees or anything like that. And that's how we came across the Cortland Community Fund. As I said before, even though it says Cortland, it's actually too, uh, like few as a whole, and incorporates Bazetta as well. Uh, and I've talked to the board there, and they're looking at rearranging some of that, that naming convention to incorporate everybody, not just the plant, incorporate just Cortland. So we want to establish this because, uh, I know it's gonna sound too good to be true, but as far as funds go for us, um, everything will be moved into that trust, and it's a 501(c), processing fees, a couple things. It will allow us to have no processing fees. The second piece of this is that it will allow us to take in credit card transactions, to where we can create QR codes, put those at the park, so that if any residents want to come out and donate, any kind of funding, they can scan that QR code, it's gonna take them to the page, they can still pay with cash, they can still do a check, but just also open the door for us to take credit card transactions. Now, none of these funds are gonna come directly to Bazetta, will all be taken under the Cortland Community Foundation, in which they will hold that fund, until we're ready to execute based on whatever contract or wherever we head with our next project. And once that happens, that foundation would then cut us a check to execute on whatever contract project that we move forward, uh, in the future. Uh, so I, I think, uh, what I want to do is just come forward and make sure that you have the information, answer any questions that I can today, and I'm not asking for a resolution to be voted on today, because I think there are some other things that we need to, to get in place. Uh, one that I've discussed with their board is to create a memorandum of, like, understanding, something formalized, so that as we all move on, or go in a different direction, there's something formalized far after, you know, four years or so. Um, we want to establish that, so I'll, I'll work with, uh, Trustee Morelli to try to get some kind of letterhead, that we can establish something that you guys can review. We can get over to their board, and once we have something in writing, we get back over to the court legal review, and, uh, move forward with that. Outside of that, just, uh, just a little bit more history, just last year, they moved 10.6 million in grants, uh, they took in 6,000 power, 33 donations, which accumulated about $9.2 million. So I can tell you that just because they are established, they know what they're doing, I don't, this isn't something that's kind of like pulled together, uh, they have a great program, so more follow in that. Uh, I think I've hit everything, um, I can talk a little bit about some of the future fundraisers, uh, looking at maybe like Cholene Hyde, uh, Sam's Club also does several fundraisers. We've also discussed having sponsors as we get the, the new established, um, park out there, and we can, you know, so and so sponsor donations, however we want to do that, we can open that up. Um, so, a lot of ideas been thrown out, I, I think we're not at the point of formalizing that, but we're trying to get everything established and planning and have somewhere where these funds can run. And that's what I wanted to talk to you guys about today. Any questions?
Uh, is that QR code you're talking about putting over there now, so then that comes up on your phone, there'll be like, uh, on there where it would say like, if you want to specify you wanted to go, your money to Imagination Station, and what you wanted to support with your money?
Yes, sir.
Will that be like a check mark, they could check mark?
Yes, sir. So essentially with that, the QR code would be established, you know, would have just kind of like an ID with some pictures of what we're hoping to, what we're trying to fund, right? So we're open to a public understanding of what we're spending those donations on. Uh, and when they scan the QR code, it's gonna take them to a page that explains in further detail, hey, this is what we're trying to establish, these are the, the different phases of what we're trying to accomplish in improving a park, and creating for our future community, and then they can designate, you know, the name, uh, information, payment, and then, once they submit it, it actually gives them a receipt for the 501(c), so it can be tax deductible for them, and it goes into the bottom money until we're ready to do it.
Well, like I said, I mean, can they specify, will that thing have a place for them to specify, I want my money to go for building a new Imagination Station?
Yes, so that, that code is specific to Imagination Station.
Okay.
And, and if, if, uh, you know, Bazetta wanted to, you know, create a different fund there, we could establish that and create a separate QR code, but that one at Bazetta would take them directly to the Imagination Station donation.
Okay, thank you.
Cool.
Uh, Alex, maybe you could put forward something, how the funding is moved from there to Bazetta, as well as what the fees are, if there are any, kind of explaining on how that's all done.
So to this point, uh, I've been informed that there are no fees, uh, that we are at the best advantage, and that's why the Ohio Amptons, which is established for communities like this, to have a place to use to move that money untouched essentially, and, and reduce any costs, uh, at our level, so, um, again, I, I do owe additional information, I do have a meeting with that Pennsylvania and Ohio Foundation, hopefully next week, uh, and once I have that information, I'll, we'll draft up the memorandum, I'll have the final payment information, and how that works, and then I'll definitely push that to Trustee Morelli, so maybe he can, uh, inform the rest.
The other clarification is the current monies that you have that are in your account remain here at Bazetta. And then it would be deposited into that account from this fundraising 501(c). We'll see.
Correct, and so those, those pots of money will be completely solely separate until we are ready to execute those funds on that project. Um, I might get a little far ahead of myself here, but tho- those funds, we want to be clear that are designated, that were donated for Imagination Station, are clearly set aside for that specific project, um, so I definitely defer it, just, um, later down the road. But that's, I think that's further discussion, uh, as we get to that point, but I, I have been told that the funding can be moved in several different ways, and it's kind of our preference on how we want that moved over to us when we're ready to execute them.
So they will hold the money until you're ready to say, I need the money.
Yes.
And have we spoken to an attorney about this?
Not yet, I, I think that's part of, one, I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware, and then once we get that memorandum established, we have, and I'll outline some of that.
I, I want to say, you should probably talk to her before you start anything, because 501(c) threes in government sometimes are not allowed to be with each other, so it's a little sticky situation, so I, I don't, before you start doing any of that extra work, I think we should just ask the question.
Okay.
And it might be different for townships, I'm not sure, but, like, do you know who, who does Cortland Community Club actually, who do they fundraise for?
So they, they actually do a couple fundraisers, uh, like Safe Streets, uh, is part of that.
So it's for the city?
It, it's. It, it's for Lakeview. And they just name it as Cortland.
So, okay, it's for Lakeview Community?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
But again, cities have different rules than townships. And so I just want to make sure before you guys, you know, waste all your time on this, make sure we're even allowed to go this route before we start anything.
Absolutely.
Okay. I think it's an awesome idea. I mean.
Yeah.
But I just, we don't want to get any.
That's a good idea, what you said, Stacy.
Oh, thank you.
I think it's a great idea, Alex. It's, I think you got.
Yeah.
Everybody for it.
This is awesome.
If you could stick around, I've got a lot of questions for you afterwards. I'm not going to bother everybody with them, but I've got a lot of legal questions, uh, just to make sure we're, we're doing things the legal way. So if you could do that, I'd really appreciate that. That's, that's all I have for you. Thanks, Alex. Appreciate it. Mike, you have anything else?
No, I do not.
Okay, we're going to move on to zero eight nine dash three two three, resolution appoint Robert Ferrone, volunteer to the Buzetta Township Park Board effective immediately to fill the four-year term to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, as recommended by the park board.
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
Take the vote. Trusting McBride?
Yes.
Trusty Hobus? Yes. Trusty Morley?
Yes.
Okay, asked to be placed on the agenda was no one. We'll now move to the public comment. We'll accept public comment at this time. If anyone has a question or comment, raise your hand. The chairman will recognize you. State your name and address for the record. Multiple speakers at the same time will not be allowed. Anyone for public comment? Yes, sir.
I'm sure it is the appropriate time or not. My name's Jim Hamrick, uh, two eight four four Wilson Sharpe Road, Cortland. And uh, my family and I own Trumbull Security Systems. I just wanted to come down and I know I've submitted a bid for the monitoring to see if you had any questions for me or need me clarifying things for you.
Actually, Jim, if you want to stick around after the meeting, I've got some things that we need to talk about.
Okay.
So we tabled it tonight.
Yes.
In hopes that we can settle these legal issues that our attorney had with the contract.
Okay.
And then move on to our next meeting.
Sounds good. So stick around afterwards?
Yeah, if you want to, I, I'll.
We're almost done.
We're right down at the end and we'll, we'll get you going here.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, zero nine zero dash two two, resolution to adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-two.
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
Take the vote. Trusting McBride?
Yes.
Trusty Hobus? Yes. Trusty Morley?
Yes.
Can't speak now.
Hey, Tom.
We don't.
Hey, Tom.
You might get a whole graveyard so you can sign this, what do you think?